May 20th, meeting of the New Market Town Council to order. And Mr. Town Administrator, if you want to.
Sure. The Chair of the Town Council due to COVID-19. Coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order pursuant, number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04 has authorized a town council to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the GoToMeeting platform, and the public has access contemporaneously to listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the phone phone number. 1-877-568-4106, with the access code 795-596-269. Or by clicking on the following website address, https://global.gotomeeting.com/join/795596269. We previously gave notice to the public how to access this meeting using GoToMeeting in the instructions provided on the town New Markets website at newmarketnh.gov. And if anybody has a problem, if there's a system fail, it's not as if an individual that has an issue, it's everybody has to. Please call 603-292-1221, and we will adjourn the meeting until such time as we are, the public is able to access it. Please note that all votes during taking this meeting shall be a roll call vote in accordance with our rules anyways. So we will take a roll call attendance, please state that you're here, and if anybody's in the room with you during this meeting. So we'll start with Council Finch.
Present and nobody's here in the room with me.
Council Sanders.
Present and no one's in the room with me.
Council Dumont.
Present and alone.
Council Kuiper.
Present and alone.
Council Matthews.
Present and alone.
Council Burns.
Present and alone.
Council Weinstein.
Present and alone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So the first thing that first order of business is to seal the minutes of the non-public meeting that we just had. So I would accept a motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Any questions, any comments? If you could call the roll, please.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next item is a public forum, and is there?
Do not see members of public.
Okay. And so then we have the council to consider acceptance of minutes, and the first minutes that we have are from the May 6, 2020, non-public meeting. And so I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the non-public meeting of May 6, 2020.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? We would probably have to take them into non-public. Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is to, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from our May 6, 2020, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our regular meeting on May 6, 2020.
I second.
If there's no questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next item would be the report of the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First thing is I want to give an update on some of the COVID-19 response that we're going through. We're working on an operations plan to try to reopen. We want to make sure that we protect the customers as well as the employees from any transmission of the virus. We don't I do not anticipate any facilities, probably, I said Memorial Day, probably not till after the first week in June. We're still getting guidance from our insurance provider to show us for our liability and some practical ways that we should be reopening. I thought it'd be wise to wait until we receive that guidance, since they're the ones who'd be covering us in case of any potential issue that we have. Memorial Day celebrations have been canceled for this year due to the pandemic. And there is, we're not going to hold it at any other point in time. I know it's a big day for the community, but it's better off not to have the large crowds in the downtown area. Staff, we're working right now with local restaurants to make sure they follow the state guidelines to try to reopen. I'm going to have a non-written report item on that in a minute. And last night, guidance came out from the state on how summer camps can reopen. And we're going to look at that as a model for how recreation programs may be able to reopen. Understand that we are exempt from a lot of these executive orders because we're a municipality. For example, we didn't have to shut down as other businesses did, because we're essential. And there is no guidance for recreation, like you hear beaches closed. Well, if it was a town-owned beach, we would have been able to keep one open if we had it. So, but the rec director is going to provide me with a plan on, a potential plan on having summer camp this year. It'll look quite different, but we also understand that if the economy is going to reopen, we need to be able to provide childcare coverage for people who go back to work. Just an update on the fiscal year 20 budget. With 75% of the year completed, we've expended 83% of the operating budget. Well, this is higher than the 75%. It's lower than our run rate last year when we expended 87% of the operating budget at this time. Revenues are still going, doing okay. One of the areas I thought in the town, the town clerk tax collector thought we'd see a dip was motor vehicle registrations, and we did not. So people were still buying and registering their cars last month, and we're kind of surprised about that. And I have attached a copy of the report to my report. Just as the police chief wanted a lot of people know that after the government declared a state of emergency on March 13th, police department significantly reduces parking enforcement on Main Street. Police chief did not want the department to compound financial matters on those citizens who are expected to be told to stay home and not return to work by issuing civil fines for parking. As New Hampshire begins to restart its economy and restaurants and retail shops begin to open, the police department will begin to enforce parking ordinance on Main Street to ensure parking is available for businesses and their patrons. For more information on information regarding parking regulations, you can see ordinance section 30-39 in the municipal code. Just an update on elections. First, that the supervisor checklist are going to be meeting on June 2nd here at Town Hall. We are working on a way, they wish to work, meet here, we're going to be trying to work on a way to make it safe. We haven't completely finished that yet. I'm working with the town clerk to make sure there's enough room, and we allow for social distancing. And basically, we'll be locking off any floors of offices and what we're looking at, probably in the auditorium, as well as make sure there's six feet. But the moderator, the clerk and I have also met to discuss the upcoming state primary in September and the general election in November. We're trying to plan on how we can hold these elections with social distancing guidelines in place. First, we want to remind the people, the governor stated, people can vote by absentee ballot if they do not feel safe in attending the elections. We encourage people to fill out an absentee ballot request as soon as possible. We're also looking ways to protect both voters and staff by doing a number of things. We're securing acrylic barriers to place between the voters and staff. We're also looking at ways to have additional signage to make people, make sure people keep a safe distance in the six feet, recommended six feet guideline. Finally, we've been in discussions with the Secretary of State's office, our own attorney, as well as the municipal association to try to have more than one polling location in town. Basically, we're trying to separate it so we don't have the large crowd at one location, and people needing to be lined up all day, and we lost a counselor.
I'm still here.
Oh, okay. So, and sorry. So we want to make sure we try to separate the polling places. The council does have the authority to set additional polling places. However, you only allow, by state statute currently, you're only allowed to set additional polling places by geographically delineating by population, the town. Couple issues for us there. One, we only have a few months to do that. So we have to try to figure out how to draw the town by population. And two, we're not really that large geographically of a community that would need to create wards or districts that way. And nobody's being elected by a district in New Market. So what we're proposing is that we look at the supervisor checklist, I mean supervisor of the checklist, and we split it alphabetically by population. For example, and I know I used this and it wasn't clear, that if A through N equals half the voters checklist, they would vote in one polling place. If M through Z equals the other half, they go to the other location. If it's A through D, that equals the first half of the checklist, they go to one polling location. If it's E through Z, it goes to the other location. What we're looking at is using Town Hall in the Beach Street Community Center for the September primary, since it's not as large of an election. I've already talked to the superintendent of school, and we would ask to use both elementary and the high school for the presidential election, just because of the size of that election. The town attorney has been in contact with the Secretary of State's attorney and trying to work this out. And there's a committee at the state level to work on this. Hopefully, they'll allow us to do that, because we'd like to try to, I mean, in general too. If we have a large election, I mean, everybody here has seen the lines that will wrap around a building. If you could divide it up, so we're allowed to have one polling place, it's beneficial for everybody. The next item, as you're probably aware, you've been reading in the press that the EPA and the Department of Environmental Services has issued a new draft permit for a wastewater system to address issues with nitrogen in Great Bay. New Market with about a dozen other communities would have to make significant improvements to our systems to achieve this. And plus, we've already entered into an administrative order consent eight years ago to do what we're doing now. So the coalition of communities would actually have to make about $800 million worth of improvements to our systems to achieve this. And it's questionable if we would actually be successful. We're working with Exeter, since our permits are pretty much, pretty similar, right? Pretty cookie cutter that way. Just make comments on the draft permits to the EPA, and I put a copy of that to this report. And once we hear back from them, that's where we'll go, but we're still working as a coalition to address that. I've also attached to this a copy of the Riverwalk study that the UNH Engineering Students Capstone Project. We asked them, they volunteered, and we asked them to do a feasibility of extended Riverwalk in Newmark and other ideas to address the waterfront. And what I'll do is I'll try to convene the Riverwalk ad hoc committee to review it and go from there. And finally, I did receive a request for a use of a public location from Johnny Boston's. They were requesting that we use, to be allowed to use the pocket park for an additional outdoor eating space. I looked at the request, and I talked to other municipalities to see if anyone also was allowing parks to be used. And a number of them said, yes, they are allowing portions of parks to be used with restaurants in the area. This would allow for, originally, it was requested to use the entire park. And instead, I said, in allowing a number of tables to be lined up against the building to be able to have seats there, because my thought was, it's still a public park, and people may want to take out somewhere else and sit on a picnic table, that they should be allowed to do that. I have no issue with allowing this, as long as it follows the guidelines that every other business is doing right now. The only reason I brought it to the council is due to any potential perception of conflict. I just wanted to check with the council if they had any issues before I go too far down that road. I've not received the application yet, so we'd still have to go through that process. But before I move forward, I just want to get the council's feelings.
Does anybody have any comments, questions for the town manager?
Guess I just have a comment or maybe a comment and a question. So I don't have any issue with this at all. I guess my question is, I'm just going to state it to assume that, you know, if any other business in town came with this type of request, that, you know, it would also be considered in the same way.
Yeah, my, my feeling is, is that the land has to be adjacent to the building, especially if you're using a town property. For example, we did receive a request from the Stone Church, which always has asked that to use it for different events in the past. Part of the parking lot up at the Historical Society. The Historical Society building used to be owned by the Historical Society, and they used to make an agreement with them to use the facility. Number of years ago, we took over the ownership of that, and we leased it back to Historical Society because of maintenance and insurance issues. And we continued that agreement with the current owner and previous owners to be able to use portions of the parking lot at certain times. So yeah, I think it'd be the same situation if somebody came up and said, look, we have this idea, and would work with them to try to get that working. I mean, if you've seen other communities, I know in Dover, they've been leasing a number of the parking spaces in front of the facilities and putting Jersey barriers to create an outdoor patio. We don't have enough parking in the downtown to do that, so I wouldn't recommend that at this point in time. But I thought that was, to be able to use the immediate side of the building was not an issue. They would still have to comply with all the liquor commission rules, if alcohol service is going to be out there. We require a $1 million to $2 million rider for insurance, as well as this temporary permit is only good till July 1st, or the Emergency Management Directive may extend it if the emergency order is still in effect. So the permits we're giving out now are not the normal sidewalk cafe permits. These are special ones due to the governor's order and the pandemic.
My only, I had a couple of comments, I don't see any other hands, but feel free to interrupt me. You've basically answered that, because I think that it's important that, you know, whether it's this or the Stone Church or any other applications that come before you or before us, that, that there's a sunset clause, you know, like that, that this isn't for forever. Because I, I think that in these circumstances, it makes a whole lot of sense to allow this. But I know that I personally would not want to see the pocket park become a permanent part of Johnny Boston's or any restaurant. Like I just wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable with that, because I think, think that it really needs to be, we don't have a whole lot of parks in our downtown area, so it's one of the few. And so I think that we need to make sure that it's accessible to everyone. And so, and part of that, my other question is just to make sure that if there's alcohol service, that just like on the sidewalk, that it's clearly cordoned off from the rest of the park, because I think that that's really important too, if there's kids in the area and all that stuff. My only other question was that there was a comment in the email about maybe changing the sidewalk, changing what was going to be on the sidewalk. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's just the type of chair, the seating arrangement.
It won't change how much space there is.
Didn't, and that's what the code enforcement officer will review that, making sure it still complies.
Right, so as long as everything's still in compliance with ADA and all that stuff, I personally don't have.
Yeah, one of the things that we're, we're working on now is that ADA requires 36 inches. Our ordinance is 48. Due to the pandemic, we're looking at the, we're going by ADA, just because we want to make sure people can still get out there and be able to use, you know, try to, we want these businesses to be able to try to make a, make some business during this time. And again, all of these permits are sunset on July 1st. If they want to apply for a regular sidewalk cafe for the remainder of the year, that's fine, and they will review it at that time. But this is just for the temporary outdoor eating establishments.
Council Matthews.
Hey Steve, would you be able to share just what you've also done for private parking lots and things like that for businesses that aren't adjacent to town properties, but they are adjacent to a private parking lot? What you've, what you've said they can do during this time?
Well, honestly, it's, we're open to any plans. We have not received any, because the number one, one that we thought of was Weaver's Row, the plaza up there, that we thought some of those businesses may want to try to expand out into their parking lot. We wouldn't have an issue if the owner of the land doesn't have an issue, because that's one of the requirements in the permit. Any of the businesses have to get, we have to receive written permission from the actual owners of the land. As people can come up with creative ideas, we're more than willing to work with them and look at, as long as they comply with the governor's order, we're fine with that.
Council Kuiper.
If it's appropriate that I speak on this now, I'd like to do so. Steve, if you check your email, I sent you the application along with all the attached documents yesterday. Insurance, everything, it's in an attachment. Yeah, you got it in your email.
Yeah.
It's a series of PDFs.
Yep, just got it.
And just to clarify about the seating, what I was trying to say was that normally I have tables in front of the benches, and instead of doing that, I'm going to put the tables, make it so that they're like between, like on the bench, so you're basically sitting next to your table, if that makes sense, to make more pedestrian space, because there's more than six feet. If you're sitting at the bench, there's about, I don't know, it's maybe 10 feet to the curb. So there's room there, but I just wanted to make sure that there was enough room, if there's two people walking, that they, you know.
Yep.
So I was, I was making more space on the sidewalk, not less, that's what I was trying to say.
Thank you. So Steve, what action?
I just, I didn't want to go all the way down the road if there was going to be any concerns, comment, any issues from the council, which I treat everybody fairly, but due to the owner of the business's relationship with the town, I wanted to make sure that it was out in front, and the council knew that was going on. And we're not doing anything different for that individual than we would for any other business. We're just trying to work with everybody, but I just didn't want it, the first one out the gate, one of the most obvious locations to be, think of any kind of favoritism.
Great.
Yes, I had no issues with this. I actually support expanding outdoor seating for restaurants. I was hoping we could go back to another piece of the town manager's report just regarding the election situation. Obviously, it was mentioned that Governor Sununu is encouraging individuals to use absentee ballots if they don't feel safe going into a polling location. Would the town be open to kind of more publicizing this, so we can make sure that people are aware of that? Whether it's the, you know, LED signs, maybe a month or two before the elections. And really, not to say that I don't want people going to polling places, but as somebody who has been working through this entire pandemic, I understand that there are a lot of people who are either skeptical, scared, uncomfortable in a number of ways. I want voters to know that you don't just have to sit at home, you can go out, you can still exercise your right to vote, you can still be involved in the process. And I think if it's a little bit of town effort on our side to really push that message out there, I think it can go a long way.
If I may, Madam Chair, we are, and that's absolutely, we're going to, we're putting more information on the website. We're going to do separate mailers from, not mailers, but emails, blasts about the process. Going to probably film some PSAs for Channel 13. So we're going to try to use as much information out there possible to encourage absentee. We just wanted to hold off in case, we're going to get the information that we're allowed to have two polling places, that we're going to try to put it all in one blast. As of right now, we do have to post the warrant to people to come in in September. That's good, and the Secretary of State said, post it as is. And if we are allowed to have more than one polling place, then we can just amend it later. But yes, no, we're going to get that information out ASAP.
I do appreciate that.
Council Sanders.
Steve, in regard to that, I downloaded today the application for the absentee ballot, and there's nowhere on there, you've got some reasons why you're entitled to, nowhere does it say, because I feel unsafe voting.
Because that, we don't provide, we don't, not create the form, it's created by the Secretary of State, but that is now, they're not giving us forms.
So there won't be any new form that has that option?
No, we not, we don't have new forms.
Because you're, you're, you have to attest that that's one of the reasons, and that's not on there.
I understand that, but we're not getting new forms. I don't have it.
You have to check the disability box.
Right.
Okay.
There's actually some really great information. I forwarded it to the town clerk and the town manager today. It's partisan, so you know, it's not something that I would share typically, but it's so well done, and it's just really graphic, and it's, you know, it explains everything. And so I thought maybe we could, we could borrow it and just, and take off some of the logos and, and see, you know. So, so they obviously have that information, but yeah, it's, it's not as straightforward as you would, as anybody wants it to be, I think.
Okay.
Council Matthews.
Steve, so in the, in the report, you talked about spending, and so we're 75%, and we're at an 83% expense rate, which you said was better than last year. But do you have any concerns there? Are you doing anything in addition to hiring or project fees, like to preserve cash or reduce spending over the FY?
As of right now, no, we haven't changed any operations. The percentage isn't off base due to the fact that, at the beginning of the year, we do a lot of the large spending. So it's not always a constant flow of 75%. As, for example, at the beginning of the year, we usually give all the contributions to charities, and then we also have to transfer the funds to the capital reserve funds. Yes, we're spending a little bit higher than I would like to see, but it's nothing, nothing to put the red flag up yet. The Finance Director has been monitoring that for us. In addition, we're not, we're, and I'm not sure if I mentioned the last time to the council about the $223,000 that we're able to put in for non-FEMA money for any expenses that we had. So what you may see is we're booking items against the budget, but that will be reimbursed later on by the state money. Because there's, for example, all of these acrylic screens that we're going to be buying are going to be reimbursed. Certain technology that we're going to be putting in place to improve remote meetings and stuff will be reimbursed. So I'm not overly concerned there. My bigger concern, as was asked, is more revenues. We, as I said, we have not seen dip, but you know, a number of municipalities have. It'll be more, it'll be interesting, tax bills should be going out shortly. And we'll see what the percentages are there. I've only received, I don't think, more than five requests for review of abatement on interest during this time. So we're doing well. One of the things also is that if you notice, the governor had his Main Street program, or I'm not sure of the actual name, for small businesses. And one of the items he mentioned was that he's given out these grants to pay their taxes, to pay their property taxes. So where, if, I mean, one of the things we're going to request, if a small business comes in, is, did you apply for a Main Street grant? And if you're not successful, then Um, and if you're not successful, then we'll abate it. If not, then you, you know, we, that part of that, those funds are supposed to come out. To help some of the, uh, property taxes. I've looked at the form, it's, it's pretty straightforward. What were your revenues last year? What were you anticipating your revenues to be this year? So, um, I, I would highly encourage any businesses in town to apply for that. It is half a billion dollars in there, and I think he said he's, today he's had three thousand applications, so.
Councilor Dima? Yes, just for the record, it is the Main Street Relief Fund, and that is on the, uh, Gopher website. G O F E R R dot N H dot gov, and there is a ton of information on there.
Uh, Councilor Kuiper, did you?
I just had two questions of the town, uh, town manager about the Riverwalk. Um, the first one was, I've always wondered this, who owns the riverfront? Like that, you know, initial six feet or something between the road and the river, is that town property or is, how does that work?
Depends on where you are. Um, part of it's owned by Rivermore, part of it's owned by, uh, Timber, and part of it is owned by the town. Um, then when you get to the water, there's questions on if it's the state or the Coast Guard actually. Uh, could have, uh, patrolling rights in that river as well. So it's a whole mix of people, and that's one of the things that we were asking them to look at. Um, for example, I know one of the things we were trying to figure out was a bridge, and what kind of approvals we would have to get for a bridge to go over. Because this is navigable water, so it, it depends on where you are.
Okay. My second question was, how did you anticipate funding that? And do you think that, you know, with the assumption there will be some, uh, stimulus coming in the next year or so? For, you know, and quote unquote shovel-ready projects, um, do you would think this would qualify or?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. I would look at, one of the things that we'd look at is any grant abilities out there. Also try to fundraise for some of this. It's difficult because it's, it's, it is a rec, sort of a recreational or PR, uh, project. But if there's any, as you said, shovel-ready projects, much like we had during the Great Recession, I would definitely try to put this project in there. It's interesting, I mean, it was, again, when the, the NIH student started this, it was a lot different time than when we finished it. Um, so I, I don't, I've gotta really drill down to see what opportunities may be out there.
Uh, Councilor Matthews?
Steve, is the town talking yet about hosting a household hazardous waste day this year?
We do it in the fall.
So it's, as for now, it's still a go?
Yep.
We do that every year or every other year?
Every other.
Uh, Councilor Matthews?
I'm just trying to give everyone the opportunity. Um, Steve, uh, I keep asking this question. Any discussion on reopening the parking lot at the Rockingham Rail Trail?
As of this point in time, no. We had a discussion, um, with, well, first of all, we don't own the parking lot, parking lot's open. Um, that, whatever the state owns is there. We do not allow parking along Ash Swamp and, um. That little, in that little portion right there, that's the only part we have authority over. And no, at this point in time, we are not. Just because of the fact that the number of vehicles that are down there, we cannot get a, a vehicle, emergency vehicle safely through there. So we want to make sure of that. It, it's, it's less to do with the concern over, uh, social distancing on the trail. Than it is about us being able to get emergency vehicles through, um, Ash Swamp Road. And we also heard from a number of the residents in the area that they did, traffic was just too heavy.
So I, I thought when I went by, there was a no parking sign though, in the, in the lot off of the road.
Hours. That's private property, and that individuals, it has having people trespass, so he put up his own no parking signs.
Okay, okay.
But the other little spot, people can park again. So like when you first pull in onto the, on the right-hand side. There's like a, you know, it's basically a parking lot, for lack of a better word. That's open now.
That's private property still.
I know technically it is, but people are parking there.
Right, and is, you know, but always remember, if the individual owns the property, doesn't want them there, that's called trespassing. And things could happen then.
When he puts signs up in front of the building.
Right.
Saw, but not.
So, I, I, I'm not, we're not encouraging people to park on private property without permission.
Right.
Yeah, I'll put it that way.
But it's not blocked off the way it was before.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions, if, um, I don't see any other hands at the moment, so, uh, I'm gonna bounce around a little bit. So, um, the first was with the potential reopening of, of Town Hall. Um, I guess I would assume within, with the dates that you mentioned earlier. That we will, we will have our, our initial June meeting as a go-to meeting, you know, as a virtual meeting. Um, but then I was wondering, moving forward, if you foresee, um. Continuing with virtual meetings for a while, even, even if Town Hall is open, um, a hybrid maybe? Uh, you, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what our options are, and so I don't know what thought you've given to that.
So there, there are some options. One, we, we're still, we still want to follow the guidelines of under ten individuals. At a, at a public place, so, and also the six feet. So if we have the seven councils, myself and staff at a meeting, we'd be getting up to nine real fast. So we could do a hybrid in which, um, which I know some communities are doing, and you don't have to do the emergency order at the beginning. That the chair, um, and staff could be in one place, and the rest of the council attends virtually. Um, and also you could set up a play, a location, I mean, for people, you don't change anything, people can still watch it on channel thirteen. Um, and only issue would be if we had a public hearing, we'd have to allow for phone com, uh, some kind of teleconference, um, capability. And I would recommend that we be meeting in the auditorium in order to give the room, uh, between the counselors that, uh, attend. At this point in time, I just, I mean, I think it's, I'd rather, I'm still planning on doing meetings this way. Um, until we get a, pretty much a bigger all-clear, just because I don't know how many number of people may attend a meeting, or what topics may come up. I'm not, I mean, we barely ever do have large meetings, but just in case. As for opening in general, it's trying to determine how can we safely get people in the building. Portsmouth has issued their plan, and it includes having, um, a limited number of people in the building. Requiring masks of everybody who enters the building. If they do not have a cloth mask, then a mask can be provided for them. They would also have a waiting room if a certain number of people were over in one area. So, I mean, and, but if anybody knows what our clerk's office looks like, there's not a lot of room in there. And we can't get really more than six feet in there. So we don't, um, one of the ideas would be to have a, of waiting rooms in the auditorium. And people would be called up when need be. Um, we'd still encourage online, as much online stuff as we can. Um, but if we were to reopen that, but reopening would not definite, necessarily mean all the other offices are reopened. That you couldn't come to, like, for example, my office without an appointment, or to finance, or those offices would not be open to the public. They'd just be able to do those basic public functions inside the building. Just want to, again, try to limit as number, as many interactions as possible. Uh, we're still looking at it, because it just came out really, uh, a lot of the municipalities, I, I could tell you, a lot of them aren't even looking at it. From looking at the, the manager listservs that we have, and, uh, I was surprised when Portsmouth actually issued it so fast. Um, but, uh, as I was talking to one manager, retail is opening, then we should look at opening our own. And our problem is, we have to let, once we open, we have to let people in. It's not one of those, it's a public building, so we want to make sure we give everybody the, the right opportunity. But we have to also protect the, the customers and the employees. But I'm working with the town clerk to try to figure out something, and also with the health inspector.
Do you foresee requiring masks?
In the building? Uh, yes. If it's a situation where, um, if, if I were to open within a week or so. Yes, I would require a mask unless something drastically changed. Uh, we'd have an individual at the door, and I'd probably do the, the. For example, I finally got to go in, I, for physical therapy, for a running injury, and I finally got to go in. And somebody's at the door and they ask you a series of questions before you can go in, and they provide you with a mask. I probably, I don't know, I would have to see how legally we could ask those questions. Um, but I would definitely require a mask. And, uh, uh, we actually have signage already that's saying like, stop, if you had these items, you cannot enter this building. Um, it's, it's good neighbor policy, but we can't, I don't know how much we can enforce of it.
Councilor Dima?
It was kind of curious to know, uh, on the topic of reopening, do you think that, um, over these past few weeks? That town has really suffered any sort of great losses by not being open? I, I guess what I mean is, do you think we could foresee keeping the building closed until it is safe enough to open back up? Instead of kind of rushing into it without there being such serious impact on town services or interactions? And the, the reason why I ask is, we, we closed and in April I had to get my car registration. I had it three days after I ordered it online, and that was one of those few services that I didn't think was necessarily doable online, and I was amazed by that. But.
I think that you're gonna see that in the coming years. I think a lot of people are realizing they don't have to come in. Um, the reason why we have to open is because we're gonna start running out of some of those waivers that the governor has. For example, temporary plates, um, registering a car, those kind of, I, I mean, those kind of items that you need to come in physically to do. Uh, if those are extended, then we could continue to go down this road for a while. Um, the other thing I would probably look at, and I, I've been hearing it, and I'd have to look at the, the science behind it. Is that some places are suggesting, uh, going to four-day work weeks and having different shifts. So people aren't always in the same place. We already do a four-day work week for the town clerk's office. And it would be something, and we close at noon on Fridays for the rest of the building, that it may be something that we look, look at. So we have a three-day period, uh, at least to get in here, make sure people aren't around each other before coming back in. Um, and also shifts, uh, we were already doing shifts. Uh, for example, my office, I would come in later and I'd work from home in the morning, come in later in the day. And my assistant was in in the morning, we'd be here for basically an hour at the same time, me and my office, her in the front. And then she would leave and I would be in the, in the office, um, just so we kept continuity. Those are the kind of things that we'd look at too, when, once we bring full, uh, force back. Um, my other item is, I would not require anyone who, whose family is in risk, um, to come back. They can work remotely until such time as it's safe for them. I, I'm not gonna force somebody in that situation. Uh, I don't think it's productive. You lost counsel, okay? It's not productive for, uh, the office of the individuals worried about being sick here. And it's not productive, it's not fair to that individual's family to force them to come in.
Um, I know I have a couple of other questions, well, a bunch.
Just a quick one too, I, I don't know if I brought this up. We've actually implemented an internal system. It's the advertisement you everybody see in Microsoft Teams. Um, we, I was actually using it on a, that Co, Great Bay Coalition before the pandemic. Uh, another community is using it, and we've rolled it out here for all department heads and staff. So basically, we don't have to pick up the phone or send out a million emails to get back, ask questions. We now have chat between departments. We also set them up as projects, so there is a, for example, McAllen Dam project we're all working in. It's easier to go to this one thing and see the history conversation than it is to go through all your emails. Um, I'm, I'm pleasantly surprised at the number of, uh, people who have adopted it and using it. Uh, sometimes it's just to check in and, uh, send chats back and forth and some, you know, we, and I've been holding staff meetings over it. So, um, it is, it is working. It's, we have communications and we don't have, um, I think communication is fine. I mean, there are limitations, but there's, it's fine between departments at this time. Also, as you guys know, to sign documents, we are doing, um, digital documents at this point, just to make sure we can, uh, get those processed. So we're so, we're still getting internal work done.
Um, I had some other, a cou- couple of questions about the elections, maybe these are answered, let's see. Uh, what actions will the town council need to take?
You would have to, to divide the polls, you'd actually have to vote to allow us to do that. The moderator, I would recommend that the moderator determine where the split is, and basically by number. And then come to the council and the council would have to approve that. That's our, what our recommendation, what's our request from the Secretary of State's office. Um, to be, to be frank, we talked to, you know, we discussed it, we're not disenfranchising people by, um, drawing the population by. Uh, supervised, by the checklist, because it's basically achieving the same item as if we were able to draw, um, boundaries. Because we're trying to take half the community, put it one place, and half the community put the other. And also we would, one of the, just to put it in there too, if we're allowed to do that, we'd be making sure that everybody, every registered voter would receive a postcard staying where to vote. So, um, and there, there's gonna be, um, have a fund, Help, Help America Vote Act funds to, um, with this.
And is there a timeline that we can anticipate for that you have no idea?
No, that's, and that's the problem. There's a, a number of communities trying to get rulings. I mean, to be hon, there are communities with traditional town meetings that haven't had their town meeting yet. Um, and they're worried about what happens because they don't have a budget. And, um, they, they, they're trying to figure that out too.
Um, I'll keep going, I'm, I don't see any other hand, so, um, the Riverfront Committee. I wanted, I was curious, um, you said you're gonna be in touch with the, with the committee.
Yep.
And then I was curious if we've received any information from the other capstone project? If that happened or kind of.
Yeah, I don't know, I have not, I'm gonna reach out to the advisor.
Okay.
Because I, to be honest, I, I hate to say, I was kind of surprised I got this one, because I didn't know what state they were in, so.
Um, and then the comments for the EPA permit, I didn't see them included.
Okay, I will, I will make sure they're sent again.
If you, yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great. Uh, and then one last question with the, for the town administrator report and, or town manager report, and then I have a couple for the department reports. Um, but you mentioned, I think at our last meeting, that there might be a possibility of doing the town council goals remotely with Primex.
Yeah, I've got to get in touch with Primex, and I think it's a good idea. No, I was, I was thinking that today because I was reading, uh, last year's goals, just to get up to date. And, um, I think it's a great idea. I'll talk to Rick.
Okay. Great. I, I, originally I thought, well, we just aren't gonna, you know, with everything going on, it would just wouldn't be available for us. But I love the idea of being able to have that strategy session, because I think it's really helpful.
Yep, completely agree.
So I had some comments about the department reports, but before I do that, did anybody else have any? Thing that they wanted to question, uh, Councilor Matthews?
I'll slide this one in here. Hey Steve, um, that's great to hear about teams, it's awesome, super, super productive. Um, just wondering, does the town provide or require any annual training for employees using town vehicles? On how to safely drive with cyclists on the road, you know, my wife and I ride everywhere. Um, seen a lot more people, kids, families out, and just wondering if, if the town does anything in regards to that.
I mean, fire, if, if you're driving a fire truck, you have to have certain licenses. We don't have, when it relates to cyclists, no. Um, emergency vehicles have priority over the road in an emergency situation. Um, it's actually the other way around, the cyclist or anybody on the, on the road is supposed to let way for the emergency vehicle. Uh, but I'll, I'll see what kind of training there may have out there, just, but no, I don't believe they do, specifically cyclists.
Um, I'm not seeing any other comments, so I wanted to just comment about a couple of things from the department reports. And one is, um, I know that everybody's working really hard, but I wanted to make sure that I highlighted just a couple of things. One was that, um, Chief True shared a story about Karen Bloom coming in to disinfect the police department on Easter Sunday. And so I, I just, it was a, it, it's just illustrative of how hard everyone is working. And so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, and then at the same time, the fact that the chief took the time to acknowledge that. And put that into his. took the time to acknowledge that and put that in his report, I think was pretty great. So, so thank you to both of them. The fire department, I, you know, and again, they're going above and beyond all the time. And I'm especially happy to hear that the firefighter who tested positive for COVID is doing well. And then lastly, I wanted to mention the rec department, Amy Jagonde and Kim Tillin have just been killing it with everything that they've been doing. They, I mean, they always go above and beyond, but in this particular situation, they have really just with the, with the masquerade food drive and with the Easter egg hunt and everything that they're trying to do to keep things going. And while at the same time, you know, the fact that she's still thinking about the splash pad and still thinking, trying to figure out summer programming for the kids is just really remarkable. So I wanted to make sure that I commented on that, not to leave anybody out, but.
Yeah, and I just want to make one and add one other one because it was nice driving in the other day. DPW put up all those nice banners downtown. That was a project between a group of parents from the school. And the DPW, we received an email immediately after our remote learning kicked in. And we said, here's the company we go through. We'll do whatever we can to get those up there. So I just want to say those, it's very nice to see that recognition for all the students that couldn't get a traditional graduation. We are working with them though, to come up with a different type of graduation, police and fire to make sure it's safe. And that was a new order last week that that is exempt from the gathering situation. You still have to keep six feet, but you can have more than the 10 required minimum, the maximum, sorry.
Yeah, and I just want to, along with those other shout outs to, to the town manager, because so I, I mentioned this earlier in, in the those Zoom meetings that I have been doing with the community and I had gotten an email from a parent in town and immediately, and I, I will completely own the fact that I kind of rolled my eyes and thought, oh, God, this is never going to happen. And I was just being a little cynical, but I forwarded the email to the town manager and to our DPW director, fully expecting them to say, no, we, you know, we don't have time to do that, or we can't look into it. And within minutes, both of you, both Steve and Rick had gotten back to myself and to the parent and made it all happen and put you, put them in, in contact with the, with the printing and really kind of made that happen. So so thank you, Steve, and big thanks to Rick too, for making that happen. I was able to mention that to him last week, but say that to you now. So that was the last thing that I had. Are there any other comments or before we move on? Counselor Matthews.
Just one question on the department reports. Do you happen to know the reason or reasons that the Public Works Department overtime 2020 costs are about $19,000 over compared to 2019? I'm not sure if that's for the current time period through, you know, this part of the fiscal year or not compared to last year.
I have to double check. I don't, I believe one of the things that we had this year is which people don't realize, we would rather get a snowstorm than an ice storm, when it rainstorm, when it comes to December. And January is because we're actually out longer when that happens. I have to double check to see what the numbers were there for amount of salt. And that could be the area, but I'll, I'll double check that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Matthews.
So the planning board did meet last night. We met virtually. I, I think it's just taking time. So I think the next one will be even better. We did discuss the, the impact fee subgroup. So, you know, from our side, it's John Kuiper and myself. From the planning board side is going to be Val Shelton, who's the current vice chair. And we have had some email correspondence already today. Along with Diane Hardy. That's kind of what I want to bring from the town council, from the planning board.
What, I'm sorry, I, something came up. What was the committee?
It's the, Tony, you take it.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
It's, it's just, we had talked about the impact fees, having a subgroup of that with members of the town council and planning board. So I was just, that's what, that's what I was talking about.
Just make sure that any, those are meetings. So communication, contemporaneous communications of a subcommittee of, of a group has to be noticed minutes. Those kind of items, like if we, like the council subcommittees need the same thing. Just don't want to, especially when it comes to something like that, we may come back and somebody reviews something.
That is good to know.
Great. And then just, I did want to mention that I had, so we, obviously, a lot of committees haven't happened. I did reach out to the Energy and Environment Committee. So that we'll have a meeting in June. We're going to do a virtual meeting only because we need to elect a chair and vice chair and just do that organizational stuff. I don't know that anything's going to move forward beyond that, but there were some things that the committee was working on prior to like finalizing reports and stuff that I think we've been trying to do for a year. So we might be able to move some of that forward. And I also wanted to just quickly mention that I did reach out to the school board chair today because we typically try to set up an annual meeting between the school board and the town council. So just to sort of start that process, it tends to take a long time and I'm sure that they have their hands full right now. So we'll see kind of where that lands. Probably in, you know, we try to shoot for like, you know, later in the summer or the beginning of the school year, kind of always gets batted around for a bit. So any other, no other committee reports. All right. Then moving on to old business, we have resolutions in the second reading and the first is Resolution 2019 2020-30, the McIntosh Tucker Water Treatment Plant, and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve Resolution 2019 2020-30 for authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Kinsman Corporation to construct the Newmarket McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment Project.
Second.
I'm going to turn this over to the Director of Environmental Services, Sean Gregg.
Thanks for having me tonight. This project is to add treatment to the McIntosh Well Blending Facility, which will increase the town's water supply and to meet safe drinking water standards for arsenic for the McIntosh and Tucker wells. Currently, the McIntosh and Tucker wells have 10 micrograms and 14 micrograms per liter arsenic in their waters. The new limit, arsenic limit is a maximum of five micrograms per liter. And water suppliers have until July 1, 2021 to meet the new standard. So this project will be able to, the new facility will be able to treat both the McIntosh and Tucker wells. It'll reduce arsenic and manganese levels to approximately zero. It'll increase the town's water supply by eliminating blending. This project is estimated to be approximately $5.7 million to, and that includes construction and engineering. It is being funded through the New Hampshire Drinking Water Groundwater Trust Fund at a rate of 67% loan, approximately 33% grant. It's about $1.9 million in grants. We have performed the bidding process. Kinsman was the lowest bidder at 4.735 million. The cost, the effect on this, this was all voted on by the towns to move forward as part of the capital improvement projects for the water department. And looking at the forecasting, the budgets and the costs, it looks like 50 cents a year for the next four years increases will cover the cost of these projects and will put a match our revenues and expenses. Any questions?
Counselor Dumas.
Yes, I love asking this question, Sean. We look at Kinsman Corporation. We have a bid of 4.7 million. And then we look all the way to the other side with BizCo. We have a $7.9 million bid. What are we missing out on by not spending all that extra money?
Well, I, I will tell you that the Kinsman bid was pretty close to what the engineering bid estimate was. So.
No, I hear you. I guess, I, I always get a little bit concerned when I see bids that are given to us that just seem way above and beyond what we may actually need. So I do appreciate your, you and your department's diligence to get us something that is more cost effective and more within reason. I just wasn't sure if there's anything significant that perhaps some of the other corporations thought we might need over the Kinsman bid.
Well, the bottom line is, is Sherborne and BizCo are generally high based on experience. And if you look at Kinsman and PRB, generally this size project is right in their wheelhouse.
Fair enough. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Matthews.
Hey, Sean, so the, the estimated annual cost was about $24 a year. Does that, is that just the cost of this about $4 million? Or does that also include any operating and maintenance costs of this blender?
That's me forecasting the budget out to what our expenses are and what our revenues are for the budget for the next four years. So that is to meet expenses and of all the projects and the expenses of, you know, of everything we do. Like it is an estimate, so it, it could be a little low, a little high. It's because I can't forecast, you know, what comes up unexpectedly. But based on what I have for knowledge, based on all the expenses, based on the loan, currently what we're expecting, 24, yeah, 50 cents a year for the next four years will put us right in the ballpark where we need to be.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just, I don't see any other hand. So I just was curious, Sean, when you would expect the project to start and how long you think it will take?
So we need to do the letter of intent by June 9. So once we get approval through, if the council chooses to approve this, I expect for us to be underway probably around July or August. And then I expect it to be an 18 month project. And the reason for how long is because the COVID has kind of slowed down some of the the items that we need to purchase and get here. There's lead, long lead times.
I don't see any other questions or comments. And so seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Finch.
Hi.
Counselor Sanders.
Hi.
Counselor Dumont.
Hi.
Counselor Kuiper.
Hi.
Counselor Matthews.
Hi.
Counselor Burns.
Hi.
Counselor Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next is, next order of business is for the town council to consider nominations. And we have a couple tonight. The first is, I'm just opening this, sorry, is for Nicole Jones to for a three year term on the Arts and Tourism Ad Hoc Committee. So I would accept a motion to approve that nomination.
I'll make a motion to approve the nomination for Nicole A. Jones to the Arts and Tourism Ad Hoc Committee. For a term.
I will second. Sorry.
That's okay. I paused.
Seeing no questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Finch.
Hi.
Counselor Sanders.
Hi.
Counselor Dumont.
Hi.
Counselor Kuiper.
Hi.
Counselor Matthews.
Hi.
Counselor Burns.
Hi.
Counselor Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0.
And the next is for I would accept a motion to approve Ellen Snyder, who is applying for a three year term on the Conservation Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve Ellen Snyder for a three year term onto the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Seeing no questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Finch.
Hi.
Counselor Sanders.
Hi.
Counselor Dumont.
Hi.
Counselor Kuiper.
Hi.
Counselor Matthews.
Hi.
Counselor Burns.
Hi.
Counselor Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, so the next item that we have are resolutions in the first reading. And the first is Resolution 2019 2020-31, the purchase of five Motorola APX 6000 portable radios. So whereas the police department seeks to purchase five Motorola APX 6000 portable radios to be used for police services, the total cost of the five radios being $14,866.40, the department's request includes the warranty services, charging stations, programming and audio accessory headsets. And whereas the police dispatch capital reserve account currently has a balance of $161,052.8 And whereas the total cost for the five Motorola APX 6000 portable radios to include warranty services, charging stations, programming and audio accessory headsets is estimated not to exceed $14,866.40. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of funds not to exceed from the Police Dispatch Capital Reserve Account for the purpose of purchasing five Motorola APX 6000 portable radios and to authorize the town manager to execute any associated agreements. All right. The next one is Resolution 2019 2020-32, creation of an ordinance oversight committee. Whereas the town of Newmarket and its citizens are entitled to a modern and appropriate set of laws, municipal codes and policies. And whereas the town council has a duty to ensure that said codes are regularly, regularly reviewed and amended in the best interests of the town. And now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council creates an ordinance oversight committee to review and recommend changes to our municipal codes and all other adoptable policies with the exclusion of the town charter unless otherwise directed by the town council. The committee shall identify all laws, ordinances, codes or otherwise enacted and provide a list of recommended changes to the town council as deemed necessary. This committee shall meet as it deems itself necessary unless otherwise directed by the town council. This committee shall be a standing committee of the town council and shall not sunset unless otherwise directed by the town council. Be it further resolved that the membership of the committee shall be as follows. Three members of the town council, sponsored by Counselor Zachary Dumont, first reading May 20th, 2020. Sorry, just getting back so I can see everyone. And next we have any correspondence to the town council?
We've done.
And then if there are any closing comments by town councillors. Counselor Dumas.
I actually had a question regarding.
I actually had a question regarding our Art and Tourism Commission. Where does Ms. Jones put us at membership? And are they going to be meeting soon? Have we hit the mark yet?
I am not sure on membership, and I don't know about meeting.
Okay.
Once we, we have to check the numbers and then we'll convene a meeting.
Thank you.
It must be pretty close, I think.
That's why I was asking. I wasn't sure if we had hit the quorum level or not, but.
I think that's the one we needed.
Good.
I'm pretty sure that fills it out.
Did I see another hand? Oh, Councilor Kuiper.
I just had a quick question. Yeah, are there any more picnic tables that the town has at the rec department or anything that we could move to Shanda Park or, I don't know, anywhere else that maybe people could eat out, presuming that there's, you know, a number of restaurants that don't have anywhere to provide outside seating? So it would probably be a good thing to encourage people to get takeout, eat, you know, outside in, you know, Shanda Park has got a couple picnic tables, but it seemed that was a, it would be a good way to get, uh, you know, not to have all the burden on, you know, because if only three restaurants have seating outside.
Yeah.
It could be just chaos.
Let me check, let me find out what we can do.
Thank you.
Um, Councilor Matthews.
Just wanted to give everyone a heads up about an event happening. So on Thursday, May 28, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, the Newmarket Business Association Stone Church Four Rivers Project Freedom Cafe, Newmarket Rec Connect, Chaney Company and the Town of Newmarket will be hosting Let's Hear It For Our Heroes. This is a virtual concert fundraiser to raise funds for five local charities. To find out more, you can go to the Newmarket Business Association's Facebook page or search for the event page. Let's Hear It For Our Heroes to register and to find out what restaurants are participating in getting an awesome hero meal.
And just along with that announcement, like that's one of those things that the rec department, so the rec department has always done the recognition awards that they do every year. And so this has morphed in, morphed from that, I guess. And it's just another way that they've adapted and and kind of thought outside the box. And I think it'll be really fun. And I know that they've done the Zoom Talent Show, and I mentioned before the mass masquerade, which I think is adorable, food drive. And so they're following the same route that the the first responders, the parade route that they did over the next bunch of Fridays. So so check. I'm sure it's on the website and then also on the Facebook page for those routes. And then for the signup information for the event next week. Any other closing comments? Oh.
So during the meeting, I heard back from Primex. They could do a virtual goal setting session. Is there any dates that definitely do not work for any of the councillors, so I could try to schedule that?
As far as like any dates at all?
Traveling? Any other meeting, like any family events or anything like that, that just does not, do not, does not work?
No, my schedule's open.
I know, it is kind of funny asking you that, but.
Um, question for you, Steve, would this, would the intention be holding it on a weekend day, or we, would we be looking at sometime during the week?
Traditionally, we've done it on an off Wednesday night.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to schedule, just so it's a lot easier because we usually have those blocked out. But yeah, we could do it the same way. So I'll just see if we could put on an off Wednesday.
With that in mind, Ben, I would have no issue doing it on an off Wednesday, any Wednesday.
Yeah, I think we traditionally start at 6 to give us a little more time.
I can do basically any Wednesday other than next week.
Okay.
I actually have plans. It's very exciting. On Zoom, but still.
Yeah. Good.
Any, anything.
Sounds good.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody. And so I will assume that we are going to meet virtually next, for our next meeting in two weeks. See you all then. And until then, we're adjourned. Thank you.